Welcome to the Select Board meeting for November 5th. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Stephen, do you have some announcements for us?
Yes, I do. Couple of things. First is, obviously tomorrow is Election Day, and as many of you are aware, there has been construction out in front of the Community House on Williams Street where it meets Long Meadow Street East into the green. Most of that construction has been completed. The line painting for the parking area in front of the Community House is only partially done, but if people, the hope is the first five or six people park on an angle like this supposed to everyone will just kind of take their cues going forward. We do have four handicap spots right near the door, two on Williams Street, two on right in front of the Community House, and so people are just encouraged to, you know, do their best to park in a normal spacing, and it should be open for access for everybody. They've done a good job cleaning it up, and I want to commend the DPW and the contract, two different contractors, two different projects. The coordination was excellent, and they were able to get it done. Speaking of that, we did get a letter last week saying that because of the favorable revenue climate in the Commonwealth, we got a letter last week that says we're going to get an extra $94,677 in Chapter 90 money.
Wonderful.
So that's good. It's like, you know, finding money in your pocket when you're doing laundry or something like that. And then, I just have, you know, there are these websites out there that perpetually put out these lists of things, and there was one, and Mass Live is actually good about putting them on their, on their website, and there was one that came out this, oh, this morning, that said the safest, that had ranked the safest college campuses in the Commonwealth, and Bay Path University in Long Meadow is number one.
Oh, wonderful.
And as we all know, that is not by accident, and that is really a credit to, I mean, the university, I know they work hard, and I know they take their security very seriously, but they do that in a way that leads to a lot of collaboration with our local police department and our local fire department, so the town departments deserve every bit as much credit for that achievement as does the Bay Path campus security. So that's something I'm proud of, and we announced at the staff meeting, and I think it was, like I said, that's a team achievement.
I was actually on campus today, and a security guy asked me, "So what are you doing here?" And I, "I'm just going to the gym," you know, but they're conscious, I must have looked suspicious.
Yeah. We may have called ahead. But no, in all sincerity, I think it's, I was scrolling through to see, and I was, I shouldn't say surprised to see Bay Path, number one. I mean, I think, we know that it's a safe community and a safe campus, but I was pleased to see it honored by this, by this list. So congratulations to Bay Path and to the police department and fire department.
Any other announcements from Select Board people?
Yeah, I have one. It's like Stephen said, we're gonna go to the polls in the, in the morning if we haven't already voted. I wanted to remind everybody that we have one of our own that is running for the Register of Deeds this year, so check the ballot and you'll find out who it is. Thank you.
Can I just follow up on that since we're doing announcements and keep it thematically? We had 2,700 early voters, so over, well over 20% turnout.
25%.
25% turnout before the polls have even opened. I think there are a lot of communities where 25% turnout, you know, at the end would be considered pretty good turnout for an election year. We expect to be very busy, or Kathy, our clerk, Kathy Ingram expects to be very busy tomorrow, so I think it's a credit to the engagement, the civic engagement of the community that we've already had 25% of the voters turn out in Election Day until tomorrow. So I want to commend Kathy and Kathy Ingram and Jackie Sullivan and all the election workers for not only being nimble and moving early voting over to Greenwood, which actually worked out pretty well in the end, but also for managing what is still a relatively new process. They did a great job, and I know they're gonna do a great job tomorrow, too.
You wanna say anything about the veterans?
Oh, yeah, duh. We did have our Charlie and Mike Veterans Day race on Saturday. It was pretty well attended. We noticed that the crowds have kind of gotten smaller over the years, but we've kind of settled in where it's 100 to 125 runners, and we have a lot of great volunteers, and I haven't looked at the final tally, but I know we probably raised, you know, a few thousand dollars for some local charities, and one of the, one of the recipients is going to be Vet Air, which is a program by which a pool of private pilots will take veterans to, fly veterans to appointments at VA hospitals that may have the specialty they need but may be a long distance away, and that is headed by our own former Veterans Agent, Jesus Pereira. So it was nice to see Jesus come back and be honored by the race that he would, he would help develop and receive something for his charity. We always make a donation to the Holyoke Soldiers Home as well, and the name of the third one escapes me, but it's also a-
Something Hope?
Yeah.
Project Hope?
Project, Project, Project New Hope, I think, and it's really, it gives veterans who are coming back in, you know, back into civilian life, some resources to get themselves established and-
Special retreats.
Yeah, things like that, yeah. So it, all of the programs were excellent, like I said, the day was well-attended. The food was great, we added marinated-
If you say yourself.
As I, yeah, I know, yep. As I said before, we, you know, I, 'cause I'm part of the grilling team, and nobody's died yet that we're aware of, but Armadas supplies by donation, much of the food, and this year they added marinated chicken, and it was a big hit. And we had live entertainment, that was really, that was really good, too, so it was a great day.
And we had so many volunteers and our employees as well as residents. It was a wonderful day. And again, Charlie and Mike means continuing mission, and it's for us to help our troops when they come back here. So anyone wants to contribute, you can still write checks to Long Meadow Veteran Services, and it would be given to those charities. And the community gets together once a year to remember our veterans and to raise money. I think it's a wonderful thing.
There is a checkbox on our utility bills, too, I think, right? Yeah, we added a checkbox for our donation to a local Veterans account as well, and you're right that we should note that the, the event only happens because of all the volunteer support we receive, and I predicted it would not rain during the race. It rained before the race, and it rained after the race, but it did not rain during the race.
Perfect day.
It has never rained on the Charlie and Mike.
Yeah, yeah. One more announcement is we're still doing flu shots down at the Adult Center, which I understand it's gonna be a bad flu season, so look those up, and it doesn't cost you anything. Wanna move on to resident comments? I understand we have some residents.
Yes.
Tell us your name and your address for the minutes.
Richard Joseph, 57 Wheel Meadow Drive.
Steve Dudek, 136 Grassy Gutter Road.
Okay, so we're gonna go ahead and get right into it. Steve is the woman's head lacrosse coach here at Long Meadow. I'm a resident, and I'd like to take you through a project, a proposed project that we have, we'd like to donate to the town, to the Boosters Club. Hopefully you've received a copy of the presentation, seen the pictures of it. Stop me if you have any questions. I'll take about two to three minutes and walk through this.
Do you have a slide presentation that we're supposed to be showing?
That you have in front of you.
Oh, okay, so 'cause he was looking there, I didn't know if we were gonna be able to project it for people back home. No?
It's up to you if you'd like to.
It'll take a little bit to get set up.
Okay, so why don't you go?
Okay. A group of town organizations and individuals would like to build and donate a freestanding concrete wall with grass or turf on each side to be located on Russell Field near soccer and lacrosse and up against Blueberry Hills Woods, and there's a picture on page three. We've explored other locations in town and feel this area would promote the most use by town youth and high school sports. The wall will be 40 feet wide and 15 feet high with grass or turf extending approximately 25 feet on each side to allow for soccer, lacrosse, and field hockey players' use. We have spoken with the same engineering company that designed the walls out in Acton, Boxborough, Lincoln-Sawbury, and based upon their experience, we've enclosed their plans as well. This type of practice wall is becoming very popular and exists in Lincoln-Sawbury, Hingham, and Westwood, to name a few towns out east. Given the intended construction and material used, we expect the ongoing maintenance costs to be minimal. We also confirmed this with the Eastern Mass towns. The town programs who have expressed interest in supporting the project include youth lacrosse, soccer, field hockey, along with private donations. We've met with the head of the Park and Rec, Barry Jarvis, the athletic director, Mike Capitasto, the school subcommittee, town manager, Mr. Crane, and the building inspector, Paul Healy. The wall is supported by all of these towns officials, and we have obtained three quotes for the project. A couple of alternatives considered. The, the bounce-back wall will provide years of experience to the youth programs along with the high school athletes. Regarding locations, we did speak with the athletic director and suggested the south corner by the football area near the concession stand. If the wall was perpendicular to Williams Street, it would run the risk of balls going over the wall and potentially hitting oncoming traffic requiring a net system, which we don't want to get into that situation. If it was to be positioned parallel to Williams Street, we would run the risk of balls hitting the concession building and potentially breaking a window. This location would not provide high school teams with direct access during their seasonal sports, and then we also considered Wolf Swamp, although we don't feel that it would benefit the youth or high school students out at Wolf Swamp that would not get the intended use. Finishing the play area, we would recommend a turf subsurface. We looked at a rubber material. The rubber material, we don't think would be durable if the kids decided to wear cleats. Bark mulch, it wouldn't provide for a bounce-back, so we have several quotes on different types and varieties of turf that we would recommend to, to the council. With regard to ongoing maintenance, essentially it's concrete. We all, we all have foundations, obviously, but they'll last forever. We've consulted with two high schools, the costs are minimal. We've committed to putting an anti-graffiti material on the wall so that if we did have an incident, it would be much easier to remove any type of graffiti on the wall, and I've got quotes from several types of products that are out in the industry. Two of the contractors that quoted the wall are very familiar with the product and suggest that we use it as well. Let's see, what else can I say? With respect to budget, we would, we would expect about $1,000 a year just as a, a maintenance cost, touch-up work and any type of labor that would be associated with it. The, the plans in the presentation essentially are plans that we obtained. Steve was kind enough to reach out to some of the contacts he has out east. They gave us a set of plans that were specific to their location and their soil conditions. We would expect something less, let's say, less beefy with respect to footings and that type of thing. They had very bad soil conditions. We would have our own engineering design for our location. This is just kind of a mock-up. And the location we're recommending is over at Russell Field. We would recommend the wall be perpendicular to Bliss Road so that it would be used on both sides, and obviously we wouldn't want kids behind it, you know, hiding away from ongoing police cruisers, traffic, that type of thing. We're estimating the cost to be anywhere between $50,000 to $70,000, and that would be with the structure itself and some type of turf product on both sides. And that's really it. I mean, we've got pictures of it in here. You know, personally, I feel that, and I do appreciate, I listened to the August or the June presentation, and one of the members of the board commented on the fact that the sports teams all made it to the semis, which is great. Lacrosse, soccer, and baseball, I think it's great. We feel that with this tool for the students and the athletes, it would take the game, their games to the next level, allowing them to go out there and practice on their own, whether it's wall ball, lacrosse, soccer, and even field hockey, and allow us to truly compete with some of the east teams that have many more people and kids to pull from, and this would take us to the next, next level to get into the states and state finals and that type of thing. If you want to add anything, Steve?
No, I, I think Ms. Barron wrote a great email a few days back regarding kids getting together and having a place to go, and much like a, maybe a playground for younger kids, this wall right here gives them another activity to do centered around athletics, and we all know the benefits that athletics can have. So I thought it was a great email that she wrote.
Any questions?
What about lighting? Any idea, have you thought about that?
We have, and it was suggested by, by Beth Barron. It's something that we could definitely do. We would have to get additional quotes on it. I would estimate anywhere between $15,000 to $18,000 for lighting, appropriate lighting.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Phase two.
Yeah. My, well, my next-door neighbor, Caitlin McAvoy, had a wall like that, and she became the women's, captain of the women's soccer team at Williams College, so, so I would highly recommend it for soccer players. Sounds like a great plan.
Thank you.
Any other questions? So you'd be paying for the installation of the wall, and the town would then be responsible for the maintenance every year. What about, if it's a turf field, does that have to be replaced after 10 years? What is the life expectancy?
Yeah, I've received three quotes on turf, anywhere between 15 years, 18 years replacement.
And there's no way we can rent space for this?
You know, it's, that's a great point. I mean, it's something where we could potentially look at that, absolutely.
Did the town have any concerns or que-
No, I mean, I think-
Issues?
I give Richard and Steve a lot of credit. We did have a meeting about it. We talked about our concerns, ongoing maintenance. I think the process is, if the board has concerns, then you would communicate those to me, and then we could continue working on it. Otherwise, the town would then accept the donation. I think we have to work through procurement a little bit for the, how it actually gets bid out and built, but we can sort all those details. I know Mark, who's not here tonight, did send a note expressing having some questions and some sick concerns, mostly just questions. I, I think he's been mostly satisfied, or those answers, he's been providing most of the answers, I just haven't followed up with them, but like I said, the next step would be, we would just agree to accept the donation.
And I guess the schools have been informed of this?
They, they support it.
Did Parks and Rec, were they informed?
Yeah, Barry supports it, I think. You know, it's really, it is really geared towards scholastic sports, but her campers eventually become scholastic sports athletes, too, so, and, and we agree with their assessment, but we'll just won't feel, we think it'd be too isolated.
And it's not on the agenda, so we can't vote on it tonight?
No.
Okay. So this is informational?
Informational for now. I think, I think it just gives you a chance to think about it, look at their printed materials, let me know if you, or you can probably contact them directly, or you can just communicate any questions or concerns to me.
Do you need this on, voted on this month in November?
The sooner the better. We, we do have some work to do to go ahead and raise some of the funding, so it'll take us roughly three months to do that, and we would like to break ground in March.
Right, so I will-
There's a three-week lead time.
I'll recommend the chair try to put it on the next meeting, which will probably be in two weeks, right? All right. No other questions? Thank you very much for your generosity and the work you put into this.
Thank you.
Great.
Thank you. All right, moving on to any Select Board comments?
I have one. I'd like to request an agenda item. I mentioned it to Mark, I know for some reason we didn't get it on, but we have that issue on the Bliss Park vote.
Oh, yes.
And I'd like to get that back before this board so we can get a final resolution on that.
And what you're talking about is marking the deed at the park?
Right, right. I'd like to get a final resolution on what we're gonna do.
I'll make a note to that, in fact, for-
'Cause I know we were waiting for information about the cost, 'cause it was gonna be several thousand dollars to, to have, to move forward and process the paperwork, and any news on that, please?
I haven't been able to connect with town council on that. I think, well, he did say, he did offer an alternative that was very cost-effective, and that was just recording with, along with the property, a certified copy of the vote in town meeting. I think if we're gonna do, redraw a deed and do all that stuff, then it gets into pretty significant monies, for certain, 'cause you have to do a new survey and-
Why don't we ask for this to be on December agenda, maybe the first, maybe December?
Yeah, I'd like, I'd like to get a resolve. It's still, it's still roaming around out there.
I mean, our council had advised us that we didn't need to take any action, but the board wants to talk about options.
Well, I think, I think the, we've seen the board should take some action to acknowledge the direction they're gonna take.
It's worth the agenda item.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, I think, I think that's the problem. I understand what you said, Stephen, you sent it to me, and I thank you for that, and-
But, I, I think, to your point, Richard, I mean, I think the board can just make a decision to either follow council's advice or do something different.
Right.
But you should at least have the discussion and make the decision.
That's what I'm saying.
I just didn't want the, the folks at home to think that we sat on it just 'cause we didn't care, we were gotten advised by our lawyer that we didn't need to do anything. That's pretty much why we, why at least I didn't push any.
Well, there has been a lot of stuff going on behind the scenes. You and I chatted about that. Just get it out and get it finally resolved.
All right. I'll press that on to the chair. Any other Select Board comments? No? Okay, why don't we move on to the quarterly interviews? Sir, do you wanna come up?
Sure.
Give us your name and what position you are interviewing for.
Hi, my name is Jeff Welch. Thank you for the opportunity. I'm applying for the Recycling Commission position.
Okay, and your address?
19 Allen Road.
Thank you. All right, and that is the one-year associate term expiring 6/30/2019.
Yes.
So it's actually just a few months. We'll have to come back and see if it's-
[laughing]
All right, any questions for Mr. Welch? This is your, oh, go ahead.
Go ahead, Mary.
This is your first time on the Recycling Commission?
Yes, it is.
Or is it?
Yep.
And what inspired you to get on recycling?
It's a mix of passion between civic responsibility, public administration, and an interest in recycling, so-
Thank you for volunteering.
I'm new to the community, so, yeah.
And welcome.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Yeah, that's pretty well what I was saying. I know she's just been in town for four months, so that it's pretty quick to be stepping up to serve on committee, so I thank you for coming forward.
Thank you.
You're on the, what was it, the World Council here? World Affairs Council of Western Mass?
Yes.
What is that?
That's an organization that, that promotes a, a responsibility in civics and global affairs, has been around for, I think, 80, 90 years. Has been a member for almost two years. Yep.
Okay. Are there any environmental issues also?
Not specifically, no. Not specifically.
Well, the Recycle Commission's been a very strong group here in town. They've done a lot of great work, and they do the Earth Day every year, as well as, and now we have the plastic bag issue that's come up.
Yeah.
And the new thing that they've been working on is organic waste recycling, which has worked really well. They take some of the prep that's coming out of the kitchens at the schools, and it's going to the Forest Park Zoo.
Exciting, yeah.
So I think they'll really enjoy having you aboard.
Great.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you very much.
The process is, we go the next meeting, and then we vote on it.
Okay.
The next meeting, okay?
All right.
And then you'll have to come in and get sworn in, and then get to start.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Welcome. And you're here? Come on in. Give us your name and address, please.
My name is Anna Berkey, and I am, live at 32 Williston Drive.
And you're looking for the Parks and Rec Commission, and it's a-
That's right.
-three-year term expiring 6/30/2021.
That's right.
Okay. And why did you decide on Parks and Rec?
Well, it was one of my friends at school, Margaret Akas, suggested I apply. I hadn't thought about it before that, but we had had, her and I, as sort of I detailed in the application, have had a number of discussions about sort of the functions of the park board in her capacity as being on it, in part 'cause I use a lot of our parks, and so it sort of casually comes up in conversation.
Well, thank you for volunteering. Any questions?
Just, your, your list of publications is pretty extensive with chemistry. I wish we had some, you sure you don't wanna join the health department?
It's, I'm not very good at the, the sort of health side of it, so, I'm a chemist, not a biologist, but, yeah.
So, well, hopefully you'll enjoy this. It'll be a change of pace, so thank you for volunteering, and we'll-
Well, here in town, it's a very busy group. There's so many sports, as you know, get involved, and we have so much parkland. It's, I think you'll enjoy it. So again, the process, we'll have to interview everybody, and then we would be voting probably the following meeting.
Okay.
I thought I had the only 608 area code in town, how I know that I'm not the only-
You have a 608 area code?
We'll talk later.
Wow.
[laughing] Thank you for having me. And I think the other two people aren't here yet, and so we're not going to wait. You're welcome to stay at the rest of the meeting, or you don't need to. We'll be voting and discussing it next time. Okay, thank you. All right, so we're gonna move on to, let's just approve the minutes. Is there a motion for the October 1st regular meeting minutes?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Three agree? Okay, a motion to accept October 15th?
So moved.
Second?
Second, yes.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor? Three agree? All right, and town manager reports?
Just a few things that I did not have, last week was, to be honest, pretty manic, worrying about paving, 'cause it was, right up until the Thursday morning, it was looking questionable as to whether or not that work was gonna take place, but it did take place. I think I sent a note to the board on Friday. Dwight Road, the intermediate course pavement for the entire project area has been completed. There's a lot of touch-up work and curb and sidewalk work that still remains to be done, but that's a pretty significant milestone. The other couple of items, this week, we have a, I'm gonna be continuing the discussion tomorrow morning with East Long Meadow and Pioneer by Planning Commission about shared public health services. There's a draft report that we're looking at tomorrow, and we'll be saying that, I'm sure, to the board in, if not the next pack, at one shortly thereafter. We also have, I'll be speaking as a part of a team at the Greater Springfield Social Services luncheon on Wednesday about our, it's now called Neighbor to Neighbor Project. We've been referring to it as the Isolation Project. Ann Thomas at Glen Meadow kinda took the lead to write a grant to help fund some of the effort to get this going, and it involves other community partners, and I'm excited about the effort and the grant and moving forward, so we'll be presenting-
Does it explain what you're doing in the habit you hope to do?
So basically, it's a few, a few, a few religious leaders in our community, as well as Glen Meadow and the town of Long Meadow partnering to try and develop better ways of combating loneliness and isolation in the entire community, but really with a focus in the senior community. As the board knows, that there are times where we discover situations that really we've, we have just found out too late that someone is isolated, and it can lead to bad living conditions and costly processes through the court system, and once it goes to that level, there's really, our ability to manage it in a personalized way for the resident is really gone. It's all managed by the courts and by state statute. And so, you know, once we get into those situations, we're good at going through those processes, and if, if we can, getting people the help they need, but we often don't know that they're out there unless we interface with them through an ambulance call or Meals on Wheels or something like that, and we thought if we work with community partners, especially Houses of Worship, they may know, you know, who they haven't seen in a while, and, you know, maybe some, be able to coordinate some wellness checks with some volunteers. We knew the town as an organization didn't have the capacity to do this in the way it needs to be done, and so we developed these partnerships, and like I said, I give Glen Meadow credit. They really stepped up and pursued the grant and wanted to really be a, a player in helping combat, combat this problem, which I think, you know, I've said this before, I think, I think most people on Meadow view the community a certain way, and a certain self, a certain self-image, and I think the level of isolation and the problems that people, that a fair number of people in this community have, don't fit that image, and I think people just aren't aware of it, and I think people would be shocked to know how prevalent some of this is, and so we want to, like I said, help people out when we can still provide meaningful, personalized assistance. It's something that I've been passionate about for a while. I was having a hard time trying to get this thing off the dime because I knew we couldn't, couldn't go it alone, and now that we've got this partnership and a grant, I'm really pleased that a, a team of people is going forward with it.
Thank you.
And Big Y is going to have a grand reopening on Thursday morning at ten. And it'll be, I think they're having a little event.
Are we supposed to attend? Is this, because I didn't see an invite, right?
I got a letter from me. I didn't know if the Board got one on their own.
Debbie, did we get an invitation, or?
No.
Okay.
Oh.
So it's.
You might want to tell the Chair, Mark might want to be there to represent the Board.
All right. I'll forward the invitation. And I'll be out of town this weekend. So I don't know that I'll appoint an acting Town Manager unless the situation calls for it, but just adds up, I'll be out of town. That's it.
We have another interviewee that tables will come in. Do you want to step up, tell us your name and address, and what position you're interviewing for?
I'm sorry I'm late.
That's okay.
What game? Liz Bone. Did you say address? Thirty-four Elizabeth Circle. Energy and Sustainability Committee, and just wanted to get a reappointment.
All right, and you are applying for the three-year term expiring six thirty twenty, or expiring six thirty nineteen? The longer one or the shorter one?
The longer one.
The longer one?
Yeah.
Okay, so it'll be the three-year term expiring six thirty twenty.
Yeah.
I want to tell us why you want to re-up?
Well, I've been on it for a couple years when it was not just a committee, but it was a, what's it called?
Task force.
Task force, right. And I think the work that we're trying to do is important, and with my background in energy and recycling for my job, I think it's a benefit to the committee.
Any questions for Liz? No?
No, but, you know, thank you for all your volunteer, I mean, you look at your resume of things you've done for the town. It's pretty extensive, and of course, you've just come off of being on the Charter Review Committee, which, that committee did an outstanding job. And so appreciate your participation in that. And, well, this is good. I'm glad you're enjoying it.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you, and we'll be voting on our next session, and then we'll tell you about swearing.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, and so why don't we move on to the Quarterly Investment Report?
Hello. Cheryl Kudnick, the Treasurer Collector for the Town, and I'm presenting the Treasurer's Investment Report for the period ending September thirtieth, twenty eighteen. As per the investment policy, the town held no long-term investments that exceeded the five-year limit. The individual bank balances were under the five million dollar balance provisions, except for United Bank, East Boston Savings Bank, and Newbury Savings, Newbury Port Savings Bank, that hold the bond proceeds, which allows us for an eight million dollar balance provision according to the investment policy. All banks, again, receive the highest safety rating of green from Vera Bank, and all accounts are fully insured and secured. We completed the borrowing for the DPW facility and the Dwight Road Improvement District, and we received twenty-three million nine hundred fifty thousand two hundred and thirty dollars. And of this, one million seven hundred thousand two hundred and thirty dollars was a premium. With the funds, we opened a new money market account with Newbury Port Savings Bank in the amount of seven million five hundred thousand dollars, and that was at a rate of two point two five percent. We moved six million five hundred thousand dollars from an existing account with United Bank at a rate of one point nine percent. And we removed, we moved two million three hundred ninety thousand four hundred and sixty dollars to East Boston Savings Bank that's paying two point oh one percent. And we also paid off a band for the borrowing of the DPW facility in the amount of four million two hundred sixty thousand seven hundred dollars. The expenditures on the projects will be paid from the lowest interest-bearing account first. And the interest that we earned in the first quarter for the bond was twenty-three thousand one hundred and forty-six dollars, and the accumulating interest of this will go into the general fund. We had two CDs that matured for stabilizations account. One was with Belmont Savings, and the other with Country Bank. And I combined these CDs and opened one CD for one year with Belmont Savings in the amount of seven hundred seventy thousand three hundred and fifteen dollars at a rate of two point five percent. We've had some more banks increase their rates this quarter. Century Bank increased their rate to one point eight three percent. East Boston increased their rates to two point oh one, and MMDT rates have increased to two point two two percent. The net increase of seventeen million nine hundred four thousand three hundred and nine dollars in cash and investments for the quarter was the result of the bond proceeds we received. And as a Treasurer, I will continue to seek the best possible interest rates, fund the accounts payable and payroll accounts timely with funds from the bank accounts earning the lowest interest rates when possible. And we will continue to monitor all funds and the accounts, and move funds to achieve the highest yield available while continuing to practice safety, liquidity, and yield when investing and paying the bills on the warrant.
Thank you. Any questions on the investment report?
Well, I just question, just to understand this. We completed borrowing for the general obligation municipal project loan. On August twenty-eighth, we have this chunk of money that came in, and then we put that into a, an account where we received pretty good interest. But are we paying interest for that at the same time, or?
Pay, we're earning interest. Well.
Because I wasn't understanding how that, so it's a loan, basically?
Yes.
And so we have to pay interest on that loan, right?
Yes.
And then, but we've deposited it in a, because we're not spending it right now.
Exactly, exactly.
And what's the difference in the interest between what we?
Was it three point?
Three something.
Three something. I have to keep it under that. I can't get any more interest higher than what we borrowed. It's arbitrage. You can't do that, so it's.
Couldn't get it, yeah, okay.
And I have to keep, I need to keep it liquid to move the money. I can't put in a CD. If I need to spend it, I got to have it liquid to.
So you can't get it any higher, but it's a pretty good interest rate.
The two point two five I got from Newbury Port Savings Bank was pretty good.
Yeah, yeah, so, okay, so that, thank you, that's all the question I had.
Maybe about three or four months ago, the Board had a, we had a discussion about transfers and the internal control of those transfers within the Treasurer's Office. Cheryl and I did have a conversation back then. I never reported back to the Board. But one of the things that is in place with regard to those transfers is both her and the Assistant Treasurer have access to making those transfers of monies. But whoever makes them, there is a notification, an email notification that is sent out to both of them. Probably, you can even add more people to that. So anytime one person makes a transfer, multiple people are notified. To some degree, there is that layer of internal control built right in regarding that.
Right, and how would we know that that is automatic? Because the person making the transfer would have to initiate it?
Well, right, well, the bank initiates the email back, so it's an automatic process from their, their point of view for the internal control, that they automatically send us back, we want to call it a receipt, or whatever, but they automatically send this confirmation back to multiple people.
Oh, that sounds good. Yeah, thanks for making that adjustment.
And are you on that email?
I'm not. It basically, it just goes to Cheryl and the Assistant Treasurer at this point in time. I don't think there'd be a problem to add a third person to that, right?
Yeah, because I, I had sort of brought that up.
Just bought property in the islands?
Yeah.
Yeah, what, twenty-two million?
They bought an island.
So it'd be good, at least one other person, but it would be good if we could have two people.
Yeah, that's fine. We could probably just ask that my name be put on there, and then.
And so three people, just so, you know, people will know, you know. The whole thing when you have three is that, with three people, you can have a decision made. It's not, it's two against one. Someone's going to make a decision, someone's going to take action.
Right, no, that's not a problem. They have that third confirmation on there.
Great.
Like I said, I just want to report back to the Board, because I have, had not made that comment back before.
Now, this is a report, so you're not looking for a vote to accept the report?
Right, it's informational only. If anybody has questions, obviously, that's why Cheryl is here with regard to the details.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Yeah, thanks, Cheryl.
I want to skip down and invite Mary Beth. Are you here for the Adult Center fundraising?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, I am.
So you want to introduce yourself?
Sure.
Where you live, and?
Mary Beth Bergeron, four ninety-seven Inverness Lane. If I'm here in town, I'm sure you're pretty familiar with my support of the new Adult Center. Currently chairing the building committee. Members of our community recognize that with the building of the new center, and the possible shortfall for some of the needs at that center, which would include furniture, fixtures, equipment, and programming, that we need to raise funds to supplement the approved money by the town at the May, at the June town vote election. So what I've submitted to you here is a formal letter requesting authorization for naming opportunities for different areas within the building, possibly different fixtures and equipment. And what I have also provided to you is historical reference to naming opportunities that have existed in the past in our town, including but not limited to streets, our parks. Stores Library has rooms that are named in that facility. And I have also provided to you an example of those particular dedication plaques, along with four current senior centers, or newly built senior centers, where those centers also went through the same situation and offered naming opportunities to their residents who wanted to dedicate a room in the memory of a parent, or perhaps an old director, or any one of their choosing, a family member. And those, so I've taken photographs and shown you at those four centers, local as well as down in Wellesley, what is generally done. And so I'm here today to tell you that we're in the process of forming the five oh one three C, but we recognize that our ability to raise funds is somewhat predicated on our ability to offer something in return to particularly larger donors, and that would be in the form of naming opportunities.
I think the background on this is, to be able to name something in town, it requires a Select Board decision. But I think that there's so many that they're looking at, we're looking for a process we can put in place to first have the Board agree that they want to go ahead with the allowing the naming rights, and then how we get the naming approved. Any questions or comments on how to go about this?
All right, I just, is there any protocol now that the town has? Is there anything in our bylaws about the naming of different things?
It's a policy. The Select Board set up, I think, about five or six years ago, where it's up till now actually been an agenda item, and had to be voted on by the Select Board, which would really delay the ability. So before we name it, the Stephen Crane Building, we would all have to vote on that, which means that it'd be harder to start to raise funds without that going.
There's a pretty extensive list.
Yes.
Yes, I provided you with an extensive list of what we're hoping to raise the funds for, and that would provide naming opportunities for the donors.
Yeah.
And that's pretty, that's very typical. I mean, I gave you a small sampling of photographs at every one of those centers. I mean, there are hundreds, if not thousands, for example, of patio bricks that are engraved and dedicated to parents or whomever, or just with the individual donor's name. It's, many people consider it part of their legacy, and particularly older people who have some assets. It's attractive. First of all, because the cause is worthwhile.
Right.
And secondly, because it puts their name on something that is worthwhile.
Well, it just shows that they're investing in their community also.
Correct, that is correct.
It's showing that I'm investing in my own community, and a building that's going to play a central part for seniors and.
Right.
So.
For a long time into the future, right.
Yeah, I know you've talked about this for a long time.
Right.
It's nice to see that it's getting closer to that stage. I know you had something you wanted to say.
Well, just, well, two things. One, it would be probably easier to name it the Stephen Crane Memorial Building. Building. But I think that the reason why I think this is a good idea, at some point, the Select Board should either take this naming opportunity schedule, and either adopt it in whole, and authorize someone, you know, to go ahead and solicit these. I think what we don't want is people who are going, are soliciting funds to say, if you give me a check for five thousand dollars, we can name the art room equipment after you, after the Select Board votes on it. You don't want to have that level of uncertainty in the fundraising. I think it would harm fundraising efforts. So I think the Board has to either amend the policy or adopt this schedule so people who are raising money on behalf of the town to help offset the costs for our facility know that when they make the pledge, that they can have this legacy opportunity that Mary Beth described.
Well, since often gifts to the town are accepted by the Town Manager, what do you think about a, maybe Town Manager's Task Force, that we establish a Task Force and?
I think we need a full Board to discuss it before we try to establish anything. We have two members that aren't here. I mean, this has just been brought before.
I'm thinking about what sort of options should we put on the table?
Well, I think we put it on the agenda for next meeting. I mean, this is an introductory thing, and we have two members not here, so I think we need the whole Board.
Well, I would like us to have, to start the discussion now of how we thought that could be done, and then we could bring it to the next meeting, and it could further discussion about.
Okay, I'll repeat what I just said.
So you don't want to come up with ideas tonight?
I don't want to discuss it now without the full Board personally.
Okay.
Because this issue's a sensitive issue, and I think you well know that, so I think we need the full Board to weigh in. By that time, Stephen, get the policy up and et cetera, et cetera.
Okay, so you're suggesting the Town Manager come up with some ideas to bring it to the Board?
No, just brief us on the policy, and bring any ideas you want. Yeah, they can flood us with ideas, but I think, I think it'll be a rather robust discussion on this issue. I would anticipate that.
Well, I, what I saw was a possibility of either a subcommittee of the Select Board, but then we would have to continue to have open meeting law issues. Or we could do the Task Force idea, but I wanted some way, I thought, in the future, that we'd have some sort of input into it. So those are my ideas to put on the table, and I guess we'll look, when is our next meeting?
Two weeks from now?
Two weeks, so that would be the nineteenth?
Fifteenth.
Nineteenth, okay. Is there any problem with us being able to finish this up on the nineteenth?
No, I don't think so. You know, certainly, we recognize that, you know, the Select Board has authority over all things having to do with municipal buildings. I do want to point out to you that this is a new five oh one three C, C three, being formed. And the sooner we can get authorization, we can move forward with the filing of that paperwork and literally get out within our community and advise them that the opportunities are there to donate small or large sums of money to support the elders in our population and the new center.
Yeah, just one more question. Have you given any thought to how people, because there are certain places in the building that might be competitive. You know, there might be several people who would want to.
I hope so.
Yeah, you hope so.
I hope so.
That's not the kind of problem you're looking for, actually, yeah. But, you know, I guess I would want to give a little more thought about how you could do this in a way so that everyone would feel like they had an equal opportunity to pick a certain area that they might want to contribute to, rather than feeling like, like by the time they heard about it.
Like they're waiting.
Well, I know that they, by the time they heard about it, all the good things were gone, kind of thing, so.
Oh, I hope you're right. I certainly hope you're right. We certainly will, will do some marketing so that the residents are aware that this nonprofit has been formulated specifically for this purpose. And I have always been an advocate of fairness, and so if you and your wife would like to donate, let's say dedicate the café, and, you know, have it be part of your legacy, and you are the first to come to the nonprofit to offer that, I think in an issue of fairness, you'd be the one, even if Mr. Foster came three hours later.
Yeah, so.
I think in an issue of fairness, first come, first served.
Well, find some way to get the news out.
Yes.
So everyone have an equal opportunity of knowing about it. I know we have a few different options in town, but, you know, like even the town paper, not everybody gets the Long Meadow news, so maybe it's something we could.
As you can see from the list that I gave, it's a rather extensive list of opportunities that will be provided to our residents in the event that the Select Board decides to approve these naming opportunities. I cannot tell you, I mean, in going through other senior centers, I mean, they, it is extremely common to have plaques, dedicated plaques on different rooms, equipment, furniture, et cetera.
All right, well, for.
People are very generous if you give them the opportunity.
Yeah, so residents at home, just stay tuned next.
Yes, stay tuned. Two weeks from now. I'll give you my phone number.
All right, thank you for coming and making the presentation. Stephen, if you could just come up with some ideas and some options, and maybe it'll help kickstart the discussion next time.
I sent the current policy to the Board. I'll say that it doesn't really cover this kind of thing, so the Board will have to discuss whether to amend the policy or just say it doesn't apply to this, and just make this a separate standalone thing.
We had fairly good conversation on this issue before.
Yeah, really, that covers naming, like, a whole building. Something like this, they made it just, you know, just have at.
It was rooms, too, I think, though, at the, at the school.
Specific portions of naming of the schools is the school committees.
Yeah, well, the issue was before, so I think the whole Board needs to come back and bring it back up.
So Debbie, could you put everything that's in here into the next packet? And then included, I guess you just sent it, but if that could be sent again, so it's all part of the regular packet, that'd be great. And will be set up for the nineteenth. All right, moving on, going back to review calendar year fees. Mary Beth, I'm sorry. Mary Beth, I'm sorry, you're not here. Are you here for the council on aging also? Bylaws?
No.
No, okay, so we'll go back in order.
I certainly sit in for that.
No, that's okay. I just didn't want to hold you up. Okay, so you want to tell us about the calendar year?
Well, basically, no proposal this year. It's just, you know, we, for a number of years now, this is something Paul and I started, I think, four or five years ago, where Paul's fees would go for long, like many years without being looked at. And so we started a process. So first thing we did was we took all the fees, the town charges, and split them into calendar year fees and fiscal year fees. Calendar year fees are things like building department fees, so they're not changing in the middle of the fiscal year, which is right in the middle of the construction season. I just wanted to report to you that we did analyze them. We did send out requests to the department heads who have annual fees, calendar year fees. And since we've done this several times over the past few years, there really were no big recommendations. So we just wanted to report to you that we did look at, did make the request, and we're not recommending changes at this time.
And those includes park fees and rec fees and through everything, don't you?
There's a list that we have that Debbie can send tomorrow if you want, but it does a whole slew of fees. DPW building, health, have annual fees. And we've been looking at those consistently. So most of them, most of them have been updated. The ones that allow us to change them at the local level, most of them have been tweaked at some point in time over the last five years. Many of them, oh, it's in the packet. Many of them are, many of them are set by statute or like state law or something like that.
I did have a question.
Yes, sir.
This common victular, what is that fee?
So it's actually, it's good that you brought that up. That's going to, I was going to bring that up on our next agenda item. This merits a little more discussion, but common victulars is basically like a license to serve food. And for whatever reason, this license commission has really never issued them. We've never really required them. We've never issued them. And so like chains who have to get these common victular licenses in other communities have called us and said, how do we get that type of license? And it's just not, it's not a part of our, it hasn't been. I mean, and I didn't know. I mean, Debbie was going to point it out to me and I was like, all right. So under Debbie's leadership, we did go and look at, go to town council and say, you know, what are we supposed to do here? And their answer was, you can do what you want, but we believe it's in the town's best interest to assess the common victular fee. So on a future agenda, we're going to suggest discussing it. And I will probably recommend sending out letters to have all the places that would be subject to that license apply. And I would say it's a hundred dollar fee. I would say we would probably waive the fee. I would recommend waiving the fee because we're requiring it this first year. So 2019, all the food service establishments will have the license. But that's going to be another agenda item. So I'm glad you picked up on that one. Did she, did she tell you to do that?
No, no.
She's been all over me about finding out what to do.
I'm just curious.
And like I said, there's nothing that says we have to, but council advises that we do it. And, you know, there's, but we don't want to hit people with a hundred dollar fine, you know, without ever having done it in the past.
You mean hundred dollar fee?
Please, fee, they're fine.
Fine, fee, whatever.
You're talking about, you're worried about charging maxes of $400 for a food license?
Not necessarily. I mean, they pay, they pay inspection fees, they pay liquor license fees. I mean, they pay. But I mean, the fact that we have never required them to have this to go be in operation, now we are. It's kind of a change, but that's up to you guys. You're the license commission, not me.
Anyone with a liquor license already has this.
Oh, they do?
It's ones that don't have a liquor license, like Subway's, Great Hardware's, they never wear their seat in, Big Y Cafe.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Thank you. And thanks for catching that. All right. And so you don't require any action on that? Okay. Annual review of senior vet abatement policy.
I'll turn it over to Paul, but same story. He did talk to Jim Layden. We did review the policy. And as you know, we did up the limits a couple of years ago. And so we're proposing no change for this coming year.
But this doesn't seem to reflect the upgraded limits that what we have here. Because this is still nine dollars an hour. And I think we, I thought we went up to like, what was it, Steve? Richard, did we go up to ten or? Because this is, because this is $100, it's maximum $900 in a fiscal year. So that would be a nine dollar an hour. And I thought we went closer. I thought we went like eleven.
I can't remember. Do you recall?
I know. Did nine seem familiar to you? It didn't seem to me.
It had gone up, but I don't remember.
It had gone up. And I mean, I just looked at when all these were revised and I just assumed that the amount was correct with the revisions. I mean, because it was revised in January 2016. You know, it's like every three years it was revised. So I'm assuming it was probably revised from something lower than that. It used to be like 750 or something of that nature.
Oh, is that what I seen? So we went up to nine dollars from?
Right. I mean, the maximum is 1,500, just FYI. And the board has had a, kind of like a $20,000 budget for that, where we take it from. So this 900 kind of fits in with, you know, like 21 people who can actually get the abatement, whether veterans or senior citizens, so.
Could you explain to the residents what this is and how they can apply for it?
They would apply through the Jim Layden over at the council on aging. And what it is, is either they personally, or they can have a representative do for them, community service of some sort that they would try to match up their skills, or Jim would try to match up their skills with what town departments may need. They are expected to put in a hundred hours in return for that $900 abatement that would come off of their property taxes.
And the veterans' abatement?
It works the same way.
That's the same.
The same way, except with the veterans, obviously, there's no age requirement. With the senior abatement program, I believe it's over 60 that people would have to attain before they can apply for it. They cannot be employees of the town, or if they are employees, have to work less than so many hours per se. So there's other smaller provisions in there also. But if it's just an individual who is not an employee, it's, you know, basically a hundred hours per se over the course of a year.
Is there financial limits for the veterans?
I believe they're both 1,500. I don't believe there is.
There is income requirements on the other one, though.
I do believe they have to be able to meet the state circuit breaker requirements.
Yeah, and the veterans is disabled veterans or fully retired veterans? It's not just all of that?
They have to have some type of paperwork. And I'm not quite sure with the terminology, the veterans' terminology for the exact paperwork. But it has to be a certain type of paperwork is required. I'm assuming that's maybe just an honorable discharge or something to that nature.
Probably a DD 214.
But if it's that, then there likely is a financial requirement too then, because DD 214, you can get them in four years. Or you can get them two years of reservist. Okay, whatever, it's not that.
And there's a limit to how many we give out, but we, oh, do we meet, do we meet the limit?
Well, we, I mean, it's not by town meeting vote, but the select would have a policy of a $20,000 budget on this. So basically that equates to about 21 slots that could be filled.
And last year, did we fill our 21 slots?
I am not 100% sure if he did or did not off the top of my head.
I thought he said he had full participation.
Okay. I mean, I thought that, but I'm not 100% sure.
So, but we don't have anything where we increase the amount every year, like the taxes are increased?
No, no.
We don't have that in the policy?
We periodically have looked at this and made changes as we, as we went along. But it, there's not an annual type of two and a half percent increase kind of built in. It's reviewed periodically. And I think that's why Jim maybe, he's putting it on right now for the next process. That now would be the time, if we did want to do something, certainly now would be the time to get it done.
So we're at 950, our max. 900 and the max would be allowable is 1,500 according to the?
According to the statute.
Statute, okay. So we're still fairly under.
What's the state minimum wage now?
State minimum wage goes up to $11 in January, I believe.
So I think it is time to make this move. It should be minimum wage. I mean, it shouldn't be less than minimum wage for our seniors.
But it's a tax abatement.
It's an abatement program.
It's not like being paid for a job. You're working off a tax bill.
Yeah, it's a little different situation. Because theoretically, I guess, they're not paying taxes on it. It's an abatement of their taxes. So yeah, you have to, we'd have to view that a little bit differently, Tom. I understand your point, but this is, this is a little bit different. I mean, this is a dollar for dollar direct taking back off their taxes.
Right, yeah. But I was here a couple of years ago when you made the argument that we should go up to what the state minimum wage was.
I don't think I said, I don't think I said minimum. I think we were talking about increasing the, the hours or something on it. It wasn't so much the dollar limit. But that, back at that point, I believe it was seven or eight dollars.
I think you also, I think you also increased it from, it was 10 or 15,000, but I think you were.
Maybe have increased the budget.
I think you, I think you increased the budget for it as well a few years ago. And that's, truthfully, that's the thing, if you want to do it, you start there. Because if you raise it the hourly rate, then all you're doing is having less hours available for people to have. So, I mean, Jim seems, Jim seems to think it's working well. We're getting, I mean, I think if we weren't getting, you know, good abatement volunteers who, you know, want to do the work and are finding the right assignments, I'd be a little more concerned, but it's still a pretty popular program.
So they don't not pay taxes on it? Is that correct? Am I correct in that assumption?
They do not. Basically, the town pays the taxes on their behalf.
Okay.
So they end up do getting a W-2 because this is, it's not, it's not exempt from federal taxation. So certain portions, but the town pays those taxes on their behalf.
So with the current tax rate of, say if it's $10, what would that be, like a 12, 15, 13, 14 hour?
It turns out to be $974.55, basically, that we end up picking the tab on. We have to pay the social security taxes.
And you have some benefit packages, what, 30, 40% on some of your employees? Total package?
Sure, yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, so that's what I was referring to, Tom, is that if it's a one-on-one, it's really a nice program. As opposed to if they were paying taxes, then, then you'd say, yeah, we need to pop it up. Because they, you know, if they only had eight or nine dollars towards the abatement.
I see, yeah.
It's a good program.
But are we turning people away?
I don't really answer that.
Yeah, because that's what would make the decision on whether we need to increase the budget to it.
We would honestly have to go back and ask Jim what the, exactly what the numbers were.
Could you, could you let us know?
Sure, sure.
As I said, we did, we recently hired one of our abatement workers as a seasonal employee at DPW.
Oh, really?
Yeah. So if someone does a great job, we'll keep them on.
Abatement, if they are turning away or giving us the numbers, I'm going to send this all to the chair. All right, so the next item is council on aging bylaws. This has been sitting out there for several years. You want to give us a little update on it?
Well, some time ago, we sent the bylaws to council for review. I think the COA had done some work on theirs. And as you noted, it was a while ago. And I don't really know why it kind of fell off the radar screen, but it certainly did on my end. I apologize for that. So the version that's in the packet is basically the markup from council.
Any big changes from what the COA was requesting?
A lot of reorganization, but I guess, I know Paul had identified some concerns that he had. So I know if you wanted to go into those.
Again, I mean, I read through it over the weekend and, you know, there's, I think there's a couple of things missing, a couple of things that I have questions on. As an example, the statement about the board of directors can anywhere be, can be between eight and 15 directors. I'm just wondering, there's no, there's no statement about what constitutes a quorum? You know, whether it's a simple majority of those in an appointment or then, again, certain things like that. I question the use of the word treasurer. The council on aging really has no funds. They're basically all held by the town and they turn over to the town. And so we're kind of the custodian of all those. But I just, I question the term. I mean, they do have responsibilities of informing the board of directors about the financials and everything like that, that we keep track of and things to that nature. They have a board of directors, they would make their elections in May. I just, I found that to be a little bit odd since our, it seems our appointments run until June 30th. One would think you would want to reorganize the board maybe sometime in July or August. So I just, again, I kind of question that. There's an issue here about the budget being submitted directly to the select board as opposed to going through the charter process, which would be going through the town manager. And there's also a question here or a statement in here that I just think it needs a little bit of tweaking that the executive director responsible see that the money is spent as directed by the appropriation vote of the select board. It's really the appropriation vote at town meeting that they must follow. So, I mean, those are my little minor tweaks that I think would have to be discussed with either council or whomever.
Well, the next step, does this have to go back to the COA since we're making changes in the bylaws they voted on before we adopted them? Because I think that's the last thing that happened before. About a year ago, we had some change requests and it went back to them before it came back to us. What do you think the next step of this should be?
I mean, this is, I would ask council that, but this is, this is not the only place where we have this issue. And the select, the council on aging is an advisory body appointed by the select board to the select board. And I think there's a school of thought that suggests that the select board gets to make the rules for the committee versus the committee getting to make the rules for itself. That's a, that's a topic of conversation for council.
Okay. Why don't we, as the liaison for the COA, why don't we continue communicating with them, these changes that you're talking about?
With the board.
With the COA board?
Sure. I mean, I don't, again, I've attended Faloka board meetings. I don't mind attending their next board meeting and just voice those areas.
When is that? The third, but the third week's like Thanksgiving? Third Thursday, which would be?
Next Thursday, the 15th?
It would be the 15th? Okay. All right, so I'll try to be there too. And the chair is still Julia, right? So I'll ask that for it to be an agenda item. And then maybe we can get it back to the select board fairly quickly. Because as you said, they're not major changes.
Yeah, I don't.
Terminology.
It's terminology, again, you know, they may want to have those elections in May. I just didn't think that was the right timing of it, given the fact that the terms run through June 30th.
Typically, typically the board doesn't meet in summer, which is why it's probably in May. They're just open.
Yeah, I, yeah, I deny, whatever. It could very well be. I would recommend postponing it until September, that's all.
Tom?
Well, they talk about using the term special municipal employees. And I know that that, you know, it has to do with the conflict of interest law and so forth. Have we run into situations where there were conflict of interest? Is that why he thinks this is important to add in this?
I circled that myself and I would question what the meaning of that designation is myself. I don't know. To give them that designation and you have a number of other volunteers out there and other committees who do not have that designation, I don't know what, why one group of volunteers would have it and one wouldn't have it.
Well, yeah, because I guess, yeah, it would only have to do, because the board of directors is what they're talking about. And if the board, if they're working in some other capacity where their role might affect funding, you know, to the board, the council of aging, then you would see they have to identify, or they'd have to go through training, but they'd have to notify if there's a conflict. If they're doing two different things, like if they're on this board and they're on some funding sort of, you know, if they're working for the state, they had something to do with funding, you know, council of aging boards, they'd have to identify that to the state, which probably isn't a bad idea. It's not a big deal. They just have to fill out, it's a paperwork that they have to do. But I just wonder if that's ever happened. And it seems like it might be pretty rare.
There could be a very legitimate reason. I'm just unaware of why they'd have it. I mean, it says here, for certain circumstances, then in parentheses, payments for professional services. You know, I know at one time, maybe there was an individual doing taxes. Might have, but the board of directors would be doing taxes. I think he was doing taxes for Faloka.
I think board and committee members, because this came up at the, you can't be a special employee and. I think board committee members, because this came up at the, you can't be a special employee and a town or state employee. Like a paid, you can't be an unpaid special municipal employee and a paid employee at the same time, I think, is the issue.
Well, you have to get permission. You can be, but you have to get permission from the board ethics. They have to prove.
That might be a question for council, more than anything, as to what that really means, and why it may, or how it may come into place. I'm just unaware.
Because that could happen. Someone could be a town employee and say, well, I want to be on the board of the COA. And then they'd have to just, you know, be upfront about it, so. And then the board ethics would decide if there's a really, a conflict of interest, that they'd have to choose one or the other. So, okay, I guess that makes sense, if that, it's probably rare, but it better be safe.
Certainly can be a topic of discussion.
Okay, so we'll pull that over to the COA and then try to bring it back to another agenda item.
Well, no, I think we were gonna get some further guidance from council.
Yeah, but if the COA agrees that all those changes are fine.
Okay, we can do that.
I mean, I can call council in the meantime, just to get his thought on some of these, or if he has an idea about the special municipal employee, just so we have some background. I mean, I doubt he's gonna care about when they have their elections and certain things like that, or what we, you know, if there's another term instead of treasurer. I mean, I doubt he really cares about that. I don't think there's any legal issue with those things.
That'd be great, so we could just move it along. Any other questions on the bylaws? Okay, and we moving into subcommittee reports? Any subcommittee reports? Okay, and any questions or issues on the board committee minutes that were sent to us? Yeah, then I'm looking for an adjournment.
I'll move to adjourn the meeting.
Okay, is there a second?
I'd just like to continue on.
Okay. All those in favor? Okay, thank you for joining us, and we'll see you on two weeks on the 19th. Thank you.